I call the meeting, the order of the, call to order the meeting of the Verona Common Council for Monday, December 8th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with a routine and justice for all.
Next, who have the role?
Alder Helmke.
Present.
Weiss is excused. Lytle.
Here.
Tucker Long.
Here.
Keller.
Here.
Swanson.
Here.
Hoest is excused and Harrison.
Here.
Sixth present, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. That is just enough for quorum, so we can proceed. We will move on to item four, which is public comment. If any members of the public wish to speak, now would be the time to do so. Two things before whoever is first heads up to the mic. We do have a five-minute time limit, which is new, so try to bear with us. We're just trying to make sure that everyone has a chance to be heard, and I will try not to mess it up this time. And two, if anyone brings up anything on the agenda, you're definitely allowed to do that as a member of the public. However, elected officials are not allowed to talk about anything unless it is on the agenda. With that, public comment is open, and whoever wants to be first can be first.
Good evening. My name is Dave. I live in Steeple Point Way, Cathedral Point. I'm just here to speak on behalf of a group of neighbors in the Cathedral Point neighborhood. We are in support of the regulation and licensing for short-term rentals. We're very pleased to see that this is scheduled tonight for the Public Safety Welfare Committee, item number four. About a year and a half ago, since March 2024, one of our single-family homes in our neighborhood sold to an owner in Los Angeles, California. They used the home exclusively for renting. We have no problem with that, only the amount of events that have occurred in this home at that time have been rather challenging. And contacting somebody who is in California is not feasible. To a casual observer, the home is rented out on a one-day, two-day, three-day basis, and not a seven-day basis, as one would expect. The neighbors who live closest to the home really don't know what to expect. It's turned into a party house at times. Tailgating's okay, and we understand that. But smoking, jumping fences and going to other people's yards, tapping on windows in the middle of the night, leaving trash and debris in people's yards, it's little things like that that have added up to today's event. When there's a lot of vehicles in the area, they'll take up a lot of spaces, which is okay, and we're understandable of that. But when they start parking in front of mailboxes, in front of fire hydrants, when we try to trailer in things like boats, enclosed trailers, we have some challenges with that. And we need to have someone or have an owner who's accountable. And then there's just some one-off things. You start seeing these patterns and these tendencies pick up. And at first, as a neighborly group, we understand that, but after a while, you have to file a complaint, after complaint, after complaint. We've seen some issues with trash being left out for weeks on end, lack of snow removal from this most recent large snowstorm, which is a great route for children to take to the sidewalk through their school buses. So again, we really appreciate that this has been brought forward. I am speaking on behalf of seven homes who couldn't be here tonight, but we've, again, greatly appreciate that this has been brought forward. One of the examples of the rules that have been very difficult for the city to enforce, for example, a short-term rental should be rented for a minimum of seven days by each guest. But we are aware by the turnover of cars and the turnover of faces and people that that hasn't been the case. So again, we really believe that this is going to make for great enforcement going forward. We think it's going to be very consistent and very effective. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. We are still in public comment, so whoever's next can make their way to the table.
Good evening. I am here to once again make a statement regarding the proposal to remove the educational incentive for police sergeants from the city's administrative policy for section three. I appreciate the discussion there was on this issue at the previous meeting I spoke at, and the willingness to consider the ramifications of this decision. Alder Helmke and Alder Keller both expressed concerns about making exceptions to the compensation plan, and I completely understand that concern. However, the way we view it, the exception is the removal of the longstanding educational incentive for police sergeants, and the exception is how city staff suggested the way sergeants be placed into the new step program, as the three sergeants' compensation calculations were done differently than any other employee in the city in order to make way for the removal of the educational incentive. We already are the exception. I'd like to first take a moment to correct some information that was provided to this council at prior meeting. First, it was said the minimum education requirement to become a sergeant was a bachelor's degree, and it was implied that that was why an education incentive was not needed and instead was being built into the compensation amount. That is not the case. Per the last sergeant promotional opportunity posting, the minimum education was 60 college credits, the same as required to be a law enforcement officer in Wisconsin. If a sergeant had only 60 credits, they wouldn't receive an educational incentive increase under the current plan, but would be paid the same amount as one with a master's degree with what is being proposed. Second, the city staff said that if this administrative policy was not changed, the 8% educational incentive for a bachelor's degree, which the three of us sergeants currently have, would be applied to the new higher step 13 rate we were placed into. This is not at all what we desired or expected to be done. Let me elaborate a bit further on this second point. An email explaining what I'm about to talk about was sent to the city administrator as well. What sergeants are asking is that we be treated like every other non-representative employee in the city was in terms of how we are placed in the new step program of the compensation plan, but keeping the educational incentive in place. That method is our current base salary be multiplied by a 2-2.5% COLA, and that number be utilized for placement into the new step chart. Now technically, we are suggesting we be treated unequally, but to the benefit of the city. See, our current salary with the 2.5% COLA would place us slightly higher than the step 11 rate, which, based on how other employees' step placements were calculated, would round up to step 12. We are actually suggesting we be rounded down to step 11. If we then looked at the salary numbers year to year, sergeants would receive an approximately 1.02% base pay increase or a net 2.2% pay increase when including the educational incentive in 2026. This would be in lieu of receiving a pay cut from the city at the end of this month, as is currently the plan. Why do we have an educational incentive? Even though I wasn't around when this was first put in place for sergeants, I imagine the council at the time realized a few things. First, the importance of your direct supervisors of patrol officers to be well-educated, and giving them encouragement to do so is one way to ensure that. Secondly, sergeants here function more on the level of patrol officer than an administrator, and that's why this section exists in the policy in the first place. We still have to work a rotating schedule, nights, weekends, and holidays, just like represented staff who receive an educational incentive. Speaking of represented staff, eliminating the educational incentive for sergeants is equivalent to eliminating future internal promotion of your officer staff, because who is going to want to lose this? If you were to accept what we are asking by not taking any action on administrative policy for section three, your budget would be off by approximately $9100 total for the three sergeant spots. For that, I do apologize, and I understand the frustration after all the hard work you have put into having a responsible budget. That being said, we believe this is a small amount when it comes to treating employees the way you would desire to be treated, and for the sergeants combined 50 years of law enforcement experience leading your officers in the community. Verona is middle-of-the-road when it comes to educational incentives, and that is fine. Some agencies do not have any incentive, while some agencies in the county offer their sergeants 18 or 20% incentive for a bachelor's degree, and even 26% for a master's degree. As the city administrator said that prior meeting, Verona sergeants have been paid appropriately over the years. We don't disagree with that and are not asking for anything new or different. We are asking that it just continue to be the way it is, and also to leave the incentive in place to give encouragement for officers to promote in the future, rather than losing the incentive when they have the opportunity. I wish issues like these would not need to come up and be addressed in this manner, but there is not really a process in place for, in order for sergeants' voices to be heard. Some agencies have a separate sergeant union from patrol staff to alleviate these types of things. If that is something the city would like us to look into, I am happy to do so. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. We are still in public comment, so whoever's next can make their way to the microphone.
I try not to be too loud, so hopefully you can hear me. I wrote it down so I stay on track. Members of the council, my name is Dustin Roder. I'm a lieutenant with your fire department. I've been with the VFD since 2012 when it was a district, so I'm speaking about the potential fire NMS district tonight. That's the theme. Before, I was the city department, and I have been in charge of training for almost six years now. Tonight and in the near future, you may make decisions that have the power to gut the fire department you don't understand that you have. I say all the following, knowing full well that I am speaking out against potential career opportunities for myself, as well as what I assume would have to be a large raise due to my qualifications. Tonight, you will again discuss the joint fire NMS district with neighboring municipalities. I will tell you that although not all members are likely unified, in my opinion, members with significant influence and involvement in the VFD are against this wholeheartedly, and I believe we have just cause. The VFD as it stands today is an imperfect organization, but is doing the right things. People care about turning out quickly. They care about quality service. They care about training and staying up to a standard, standards we set, and we hold each other accountable to, standards that are higher than most fire departments. We put the citizens first. Our department may not have fancy graphics and flashy statistics to tell you how cool we are, but these rarely tell you what matters. You can't measure effort, culture, and how much someone cares, and it's nearly impossible to define what a good fire department is. I would challenge any of you to show up unannounced and just be a fly on the wall. See the daily flow of work and training. See the way our people move when we're called for service. Maybe you would consider us a little more valuable than just numbers in your budget and nameless people who magically show up when called. Getting to where we are now took a lot of work, and I can assure you, a district has a very high likelihood of taking all of that away. Let me give you a hypothetical. We have what we call all calls at the VFD, where staff will come from home, car accidents, outside fires, structure fires, serious medical calls where we send people to the hospital in the ambulance. Many of us are paramedics, advanced EMTs, EMTs, and such. And auto and mutual aid calls cause these all calls to happen. Year-to-date, we have had 279 all calls. In a district, it's quite possible that the only calls requiring staff to come in would be structure fires. We'd have so much staff on duty, we would just move things around and respond as needed. For structure fires, we've responded to 27 this year. We respond to every structure fire in the city of Fitchburg. We respond to almost every structure fire in the entire district of Oregon. So that kind of counts everything. When you're in our line of work as a POC, or volunteer, paid-on-call, or volunteer, or even as our interns who live at the station, if that workload is so little, you may start to become less engaged. You feel that you are not needed. Now imagine you stop what you're doing, come into the station, only to find that the on-duty companies handled it. The call's over, and that happens again, and again, and again. To be honest, I might quit coming, and if I was an intern, I think I'd quit hanging around the station. The district could have the best culture, training, leadership, et cetera, but Verona would never have a fire department again that could staff two, three, or maybe even four additional trucks from your firehouse in a major time of need. Now, let's put that hypothetical on a few fires we've had in the last couple of years. Having been in command of the Pizza Ranch fire for approximately the first 45 minutes, I can tell you that the business would likely be gone if not for our interns and paid-on-call staff. Another fire occurred simultaneously with a fire in Fitchburg and possible fire in Mount Horeb. We are each other's automatic aid. Your paid-on-call staff and interns again took care of Verona and put two extra trucks on the road. The only way a district could continue to supply the staffing we can provide is by taxing the citizens more and putting more firefighters in the firehouse every day. That sounds nice, but it's not feasible. Now, this letter came to our union. I am a union member here. We have six. I'm not sure who wrote it. I have a good idea, but that's just my opinion. In it, we have a nice body. It says we believe a unified district could bring significant advantages, including fiscal efficiencies. I'll give you one. Between the four organizations, there's 15 chiefs. Now, I'm not a study person, and I'm certainly not a chief. I'm just a lieutenant. But I'm sure you could pare that down to six, maybe seven. But the other eight positions, we'll say.
Sorry to interrupt, but you are at the five-minute mark.
Sweet. My last point about this is awful disrespectful to all the paid-on-call staff and the part-time staff that it only came to six people in the city of Verona. They are 90% of our fire department. That's it.
Thank you. We are still in public comment, so whoever's next should make their way to the microphone.
Sorry, it's all right. Hello, my name is Skylar Frankie. I live at 202 Prairie Heights Drive, and I wanted to speak in favor of the proposal to fly pride flags at all the public buildings in Verona. I'm also a high school English teacher at Verona Area High School, and I also happen to lead our GSA chapter with Erica Gallagher. And about this, probably at the beginning of the year, at last year, we started off the year with about almost 50 kids in our GSA chapter, and we thought that was amazing. We loved the support, and we loved the freedom of expression that the kids were feeling at the time. I would say about this time last year, our number went down to around 20, maybe even less than 20, and consistently definitely less than 20. And my colleague Erica and I have been thinking about it for a long time now, and we've talked about it and theorized it. We came up with two big reasons why that was happening. One reason was lack of a safe space, and the other reason being a lack of power and voice. Both these sentiments were felt by the students, just based in our conversations with them. And we really, really think that has had a lot to do with our decrease in numbers since then. For me, a question I've had to answer myself since this time last year is how do you answer the question of, Ms. Frankie, what are we going to do now? How are we going to survive? How are we going to move forward? The kids knew, were very aware of the kinds of things that were going to happen around this time of year, last year. They knew the policies that were going to work against them. They knew the rights that they possibly could lose from everything going around. And yeah, like, those questions were tough for me. I didn't know how to answer them, and I invite you all to think about how you would answer them. The real only thing I can think to say to that is that you can't really answer those questions. The only thing I could say to that is that you can only answer those questions by doing something. There's nothing you can say. There's no, it's going to be okay. There's no, this is going to be fine. We're going to get through this. That really has never worked. And I think the best way to do, do anything about this is through action. And so, instead of just spending time saying things, we're going to be okay to our students, Eric and I really tried to make it a point to our students to show them that we're not going to let these things happen. We're not going to let this stand. We're not going to let you feel like you're having your rights taken away. And so, we tried really hard to get the kids to practice advocating for themselves and finding out ways that they could push for change and push for a better world for themselves. And by the end of the year and by the beginning of this year, we have about 40 students back with us in our GSA. I'm happy to say that they've done a wonderful job of advocating for themselves and pushing for that change through action. And I see this proposal as just another way to do that, but on a larger scale. There are many people, not just in our school, that are afraid because they don't have a safe space, or because they don't feel like they have a voice. So flying this progress flag around the town is just the first step in letting kids know that Verona is one of those safe spaces that you can have, not just kids, but all people. I don't know why I said that. All people. All people that you can have a safe space here in Verona, we welcome you, and it also tells them that you have a voice here. You can come and talk to the city council, or come and talk to whoever holds power in this city, and say, I want this. I feel scared. I want some kind of action to be done, because I feel like the rest of the world is kind of trying to step all over me without asking for much consent. And so, I see this progress flag flying action as a way to kind of mitigate those fears out of not just the students, but all people living in the LGBTQ+ community. And so, when I think of this kind of resolution, I don't see it as political or anything like that. I just see it as the right thing to do, and, you know, there should never be anything wrong with doing the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Whoever's next?
Hi. My name is Rex Maleski. I am one of Ms. Frankie's students, and I am the president of the, one of the presidents of the GSA at Verona Area High School, and I am here to speak on the same resolution and support. The progress pride flag isn't just a flag. It's a statement, a promise, and a line in the sand about who we are and what we stand for as a city. LGBTQ people already shape aspects of the Verona community, our art, our schools, our small businesses, our sports teams, our music, and our community events. There are friends, our classmates, our teachers, our coworkers, our siblings, and sometimes the people sitting right next to us who haven't been, who haven't felt safe enough to say yet. And that is why this resolution needs to be passed yet again. For too long, LGBTQ kids and adults have dealt with higher rates of bullying, harassment, school dropout, homelessness, and mental health struggles, not because of who they are, but because of who society tells them they're not allowed to be. Lack of awareness isn't harmless, it is dangerous. Silence is a neutral, it is a deadly stance, and Verona can do better than that silence. There is a name that comes to mind as I sit here tonight that a few of you may recognize or not. However, it is one that should be mentioned nonetheless, Sawyer Cockenfels. They had many names, but that's the one I knew them by. I think back to seventh grade, how I just knew them as yet another kid in my class. They talked about how they wanted to change all the cruelty in the world, and how everybody should just be. They laughed about everything, and their smile was contagious. They wanted change for the better. A year later, they had overdosed on November 8th of 2022. I'm sure you can fill in the blanks there. Even though I didn't know them for long, what I do know is that part of my drive to push forward and fight for change is because of them. To know that Verona is moving forward and fighting for change and acceptance of all human beings, this could be the very thing that saves a life. Being seen, being recognized, knowing you are not alone, knowing that there are people in your corner to back you up, no matter how many times other people shoot you down, that is what makes this revolution, this resolution so important. According to the Trevor Project's 2024 U.S. National Survey on the Mental Health of LGBTQ+ Young People, more than half the young people of the LGBTQ community ages 13 to 17 experienced bullying in the past year. And those who did reported significantly higher rates of attempting suicide in the past year than those who did not experience bullying. Research also shows that when communities publicly support the LGBTQIA, when they stand up against hate, when they name sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression in their policies, people feel safer. They report harassment instead of hiding it. They know in their city, the city has their back. In the same Trevor Project survey, they found that LGBTQ young people who reported living in very accepting communities attempted suicide at less than half the rate of those who reported living in unaccepting communities. The history of, the history and appearance of the pride flag is also symbolic. The original pride colors celebrate the things that every human being deserves in life: life, healing, sunlight, nature, peace, harmony, and spirit. The progress pride Chevron pushes forward, literally, toward a future that includes the voices of those who have been most marginalized. It reminds us that progress is happening, and it is not finished, and that we have more work to do. I have heard many comments in the past of why we shouldn't fly a pride flag. For example, one of the things that I have heard, and with my own ears, was, well, what if I wanted to fly the grandma flag? We are a minority of the population, too. Pride flags don't cover everyone. While grandmas may be a smaller percentage of the population, they were not oppressed. If grandmas were marginalized for simply existing and wanting to be their own self and love who they love, or had to fight for their rights to exist and not be persecuted for it, then I have no doubt that a grandma flag would exist. I also don't doubt that if that was the case, Verona would also probably fly an acknowledgement of the oppression that happened. This resolution doesn't magically fix every problem, but it does say, but it does send a message to our young people and adults that live in our community, that Verona is a place where discrimination doesn't get the final say, where every resident, old and young, can live, work, and learn, and just exist without fear, where we don't wait for tragedy to take action. We can choose to act now. By saying this resolution, by passing this resolution, we choose to be the city that shows up, the city that leads, the city that says to every LGBTQIA person, especially the kids, especially the ones trying to figure out if they belong, that yes, you are welcome here. You are valued here. You are safe here. And that is the city that I want to grow up in. That's the city that I want my kids to grow up in. That's the kind of city we all deserve. So tonight, I'm asking you to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. We're at the five-minute mark. Whoever's next?
Hello. My name is Cindy Cundy, and I am speaking following the two comments that were just presented. I appreciate their concern and all, but my concern is that we are all Americans, and the American flag represents all of us. And for the city to fly a flag that doesn't represent everyone, other, for them to fly a flag that's not the nation's, the city, or the state's flag on the poll, it unavoidably signals a special elevated status to those identifying with the flags that are not governmental flags. And it's giving precedence above those people whose flags are not similarly flown. Individual businesses and people can and do fly the flags of their choosing, but for the whole city to be put under a flag that doesn't represent all of us creates divisiveness and a lack of unity. We need to remember that our great American flag alone is sufficient to represent all peoples and groups that are blessed to live in our free America. So I would encourage you to only fly the flag in Verona that represents all of its citizens. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Please, can we be polite to the speakers? Thank you for your comments. Whoever is next?
Hello. My name is Barbara Nelson, and I live on 415 South Main Street in Verona. And I moved here about four years ago, and I set up a small business on Airbnb, and I'm actually a super host. And one of the And one of the, one of the questions that many of the guests that come to my home, I live in the home and I rent out part of it, so I'm there when the guests are there, but one of the questions is, is this a safe place? I've had several people ask, you know, do you live in a safe neighborhood? And I want to say thank you to the fire people and police or whoever is here that I can gladly say that this is a safe neighborhood. And I'm here speaking to, ask that the pride flag be lowered or removed from the city. And I want to commend this council that you did show your support for this community for one year. And I think there was a lot of wisdom to ask that it could be reviewed year after year. And I agree with the sentiment of the woman who was here before me and that the U.S. flag represents the blood of people that fought for our freedom. And as we pledged allegiance to the flag before this meeting, we really can't all pledge allegiance to the gay pride flag because it doesn't represent all Americans. According to Google AI, 9.3% of Americans identify with the LGBTQ plus community adults. And so that means that 90, over 90% of citizens are not represented by that flag. I also wanted to mention that I have four articles here from, one is from Newsweek, one is from the Washington Free Beacon, one is from Political Insider, and one is from a flag company Baldwin Flags. And they were, these articles highlight that the President Trump State Department has enacted a one-flag policy banning U.S. embassies and overseas missions from flying the pride or Black Lives Matter flags. So they've adopted a policy of just flying one flag on a flagpole. And so I believe that that might be what's coming in the future, and you can progressively vote and not be penalized by rescinding the resolution or causing no, no more pride flags to be flown in Verona. And I just wanted to say that I, I love all people, and I did attend the transgender awareness meetings at the, at the Verona Library. And I really enjoyed listening to the journey of the person who was talking at the time. And I have, I have no ill feelings against any person if they identify with these other things. But I just, I agree with the woman who spoke earlier that it can be divisive when we favor one group of people over another.
Hey, hey, I'm sorry, one speaker at a time, please.
Our government should be impartial, and we should not favor any view above another. And I guess in closing, I wanted to sing a song to bless the people here and to bless you. And I was the one, the grandma who said, should we have the grandma flag last year, that woman who talked about it? So I don't think there is a grandma flag, but, but there's a song about the banner over us is love. So a banner is like a flag. And so I just wanted to say to everyone in this room and everyone in the city, I love you and I hope you love me. The banner over Verona is love. I love you and I hope you love me. The banner over Verona is love. I love you with Jesus' love and the banner over Verona is love. I love you and I pray the blessing of God over you. And I just release the love of Christ over everyone in this room, and thank you for giving me a chance to speak.
Thank you. We are still in public comment, so whoever's next?
Hello, my name is Logan Stires. I'm a senior at Verona Area High School. I'm here to address the bill on raising the flag, the LGBTQ flag for another year, and I, I personally agree with it. I have a lot of friends who are a part of the LGBTQ community. Personally, I'm not, but I'm like, I feel that, I've seen a lot of people who have like had suicide thoughts, felt like they don't belong, and I think that putting up this flag will feel like in our whole community that everybody belongs and that they have someone that cares for them. I also, people addressed about the American flag representing everybody. I don't believe it does because the founding of our country was founded on Americans who only cared about the white identity. Native Americans were oppressed, we took their land, and we also had slavery for years. And I believe that the flag does not represent everybody, so I believe that putting up the LGBTQ flag will help people who are oppressed, especially like, you know, people LGBTQ feel like they have a sense of community. Thank you.
Thank you. We are still in public comment.
Well, good evening, everybody. Mayor, members of the common council, and fellow Verona residents. My name is Jenny Noack. I live at 560 Aspen Avenue. I have been a resident of Verona for 15 years. My commitment to this city goes pretty deep. I work here. I almost exclusively shop here, and I enjoy our local restaurants and businesses. Verona is my home. I'm here tonight as an ally of the LGBTQIA plus community, and I am strongly in favor of making the display of the progress pride flag a permanent year-round fixture in our city. I want to express my sincerest gratitude and pride for the council's decision last year to fly the progress flag throughout all of 2025. This flag is not just a piece of fabric. It is a profound invisible statement, and I look for it every single day while I drive to work, and I look for it when I drive home. I'm a car crier. Apparently, I'm a common council crier too. I drive to work and I'm overwhelmed. I'm overwhelmed with what is going on in our country. I am overwhelmed about how it is impacting my family. I am overwhelmed because I can't see a future and I don't experience a lot of joy. But I pass three flags. And first flag, I kind of start wiping the tears away a little bit, and I take a deep breath and I said to myself, I did that. I spoke. Passed the second flag, take another deep breath, and I said, or I say to myself, we did that. Elected officials did that. And I passed the third flag and I take, I won't say my last deep breath, but I will take a deep breath, and I say my community did that. We did that. And it's there, and it's a daily reminder that there is possible joy, future joy, communities coming together kind of joy. The flag says, I see you, we see you, we support you. You are a vital part of our community. And it says to me, joy. Flying the flag year-round for 2025 sent this message. It sent a message of welcome, safety, and inclusion. It wasn't a temporary gesture as far as I was concerned, as far as a lot of us were concerned. It's a commitment to our city's values. I ask you tonight to continue this commitment and do it again. Do it for the upcoming year, do it for 2026 and beyond. Thank you for your time and for continuing to make Verona a place where everyone can
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Kendall Schaefer, and I am a senior at Verona Area High School. And I'm here tonight representing Verona DECA. And DECA, our mission is to prepare emerging leaders and entrepreneurs, but more importantly, is to create meaningful, hands-on learning opportunities that benefit both our students and our community. The two most impactful events that we hosted this year were the Reality Check Event and just this past weekend, the Makers Fair. The Reality Check Event is a financial literacy experience where high school students, juniors and seniors, walk through the month and a life of an adult. Students make real-world decisions about housing, transportation, childcare, taxes, budgeting, and more. It's eye-opening, humbling, and most importantly, transformational. Students walk away with a deeper understanding of financial responsibility and an appreciation for the challenges that adults face. This event directly prepares students for adulthood and builds life skills that textbooks simply can't teach. Verona DECA's commitment to community engagement is also reflected through our Makers Fair event. This event brings together local artisans, small business owners, and student entrepreneurs to showcase their work. It strengthens the connection between our school and the broader Verona community while driving local economic activity. It also gives young people a valuable platform to practice marketing, sales, and customer service skills in a real business environment. The Makers Fair has quickly become a community favorite and a celebration of creativity and entrepreneurship. Both of these events truly highlight what DECA does best, connecting classroom learning with real-world experience, strengthening our community, and empowering students to grow as leaders. These programs don't just teach business skills, they give students the confidence, independence, and a chance to see the impact they make beyond the walls of school. I'm here tonight to ask for your continued support and recognition of the value these opportunities bring to Verona. Your support directly fuels meaningful, hands-on learning experiences that help us continue growing a pipeline of future leaders, business owners, and engaged citizens who are not only preparing for the future, but already contributing to our city in meaningful ways. Thank you for your time this evening and for your ongoing commitment to our DECA students. Your support makes a real difference, and we're grateful for it.
Thank you. We are still in public comment, so if anyone else wishes to speak, now would be the time
Hello, I'm Adriana Loishen. I live at 608 Eastview Court, and I am going to be speaking in favor of the pride flags. Some people today have said that they don't represent everyone, and I understand that sentiment. You know, they were made by a specific community for a specific purpose, to bring awareness to a specific issue. But I think that they do encompass everyone. They're not just a symbol of like pride and queer people, they're a symbol of love. They're a symbol of the love that, yes, maybe a man has for another man, but they're a symbol that a mother has for a son coming out as transgender. They're the love that a friend has for a classmate telling them who they truly are. And they're the love that a community has for each other. And I think displaying the flag would really show our community's strong values of love and acceptance and support for everyone, no matter who they love, who they are, who they feel, they want to be, and no matter if they do identify as part of that community. Personally, when I pass that flag every morning on the bus, it's just a bright spot of color in my day, and it reminds me of the support that I have for my community and the support that so many people I love have for my community. And I think it would be a very good show of support and community appreciation to fly the flag again next year.
Thank you. We are still in public comment, so if anyone else wishes to speak, now would be the time to do so.
This is a hard switch. And since it is so hard, and I didn't anticipate speaking to it, but since it was brought up and I'm here, the American flag is an undisputed symbol of liberty and justice for all. To truly honor that promise in Verona, you must recognize that all includes our LGBTQ plus community. The pride progress flag doesn't replace the foundational symbol, it simply confirms with unwavering clarity that the progress and inclusion are central to all shared futures. Now, onto my topic. Now I gotta find it again. Okay. So I have been here several times. Hi, I'm Melanie. I'm here with my husband Joe Hunt. We live at 2803 North County Road M. So last week, Thursday, we met with Fidusiri and some of our council members to discuss the BACIS project that is up for rezoning from single-family homes to urban residential. I appreciated that moment with them. It actually was quite enlightening. I actually learned a lot of stuff that I didn't know, including the Sugar River runoff is no longer a runoff, it's actually annexed from the DNR into that space, so that was a learning method for me. But, and I'm not going to reiterate too much about the drainage issues that we are most concerned about at our property. I do believe that Fidusiri is addressing that and is looking into it and has heard our concerns, and I'm very eager to see what they will come back with in January when they rework the plans. So, but I wanted to be clear in this moment that a comment was made at that meeting that we are now piling different things on and we're changing our list, which has never been true. And I actually have the email that I wrote to the city council that each one of you received on the 20th of October, my very first piece of communication with you. And I want to read what my bullet points were in that email to make sure that we're clear, that nothing new has been said or proposed in this space. So our concerns, obviously, the drainage in that space has been our major concern because, as you have seen in the pictures, that was a really traumatic event for us for several years. But listed under here is high unit density in a small area, existing approved multifamily nearby Argus at the former Monks, 600 units by a West, by a Madison Bible call it, or church, Apex at Verona Phase One plus future, and the additional 240 units that are proposed here with 1,000-plus units in total. That was bold. Need for upcoming traffic, or updated traffic studies, no recent study factoring in, all identified projects expecting high, heavy volumes entering Highway M with likely routing through Blue Ice Trails, Zing, and Hemlock. Safety at the Highway M entrance, entrance sits at a grade, difficult to add stoplights on the downhill winter ice hill, stopping risks, calls for speed limit reduction enforcement on that, on that road. As we know, we have several police officers that sit out there on a regular basis that already try to manage the speed that, on that road. Environmental impact, potential to the wetlands, the migration patterns and local wildlife, neighborhood character, I'm not going to say more about that. Trash and dumpsters, which is something I said at that meeting on Thursday, ensure adequacy capacity, frequent pickup, 1,000-plus units, fully enclosed, screen locations away from homes, wetlands, odor, rodent control, routing and pickup hours to limit truck noise, litter prevention and recycling, organic plants. As you heard from someone else tonight, that happens when we bring, introduce other people into our, our space. Setbacks in building height, privacy, this is one we've been speaking to over and over again, that being buildings appear too close to lot lanes, too tall for adjacent single-family areas, review seeing views, backyard privacy, requesting larger setbacks, height traditions, step backs, shadow and sightline studies, buffering trees and fencing, potential trespassing -- potential trespassing, cut-throughs, which is a concern for our property since we have a through line on our property from that property through our fence line up our driveway to the bike path. Drainage, stormwater impacts, we talked about that. Bike path, traffic crossing driveways, we have two driveways at the end of that bike path and it's already a concern with the number, the amount of people that are on there. Like what are the, what are we doing to protect the people that are using the bike path? Because the last thing I want to do is hit someone coming out of my driveway. And then property value impacts, which you have heard. Projected at 10% value loss in nearby homes, that's those that are up on the hill. For us, that's going to be a larger, and there's, if you have walked our property, that's a hard one to dispute. So we'll see you again at the next meeting. I'll say more then. Appreciate your time and have a good evening.
Thank you. We are still in public comment, so if anyone else wishes to speak?
Hello again. My name is Scott Side. My wife Kelly and I live at 308 Monte Cristo Circle in Verona. And I'm here again to speak in opposition to the BACIS project. I get the sense that the decision-making with respect to approval of multifamily housing developments in Verona is based in large part on the idea that there's an affordable housing crisis. Well, great news, I think we've turned the corner. CNBC reported just last week, and here's the webpage. Apartment rents dropped further with vacancies at record high. The national median rent for apartments fell 1% in November from October, and it was the fourth consecutive month-over-month decline. Apartment rents are down 1.1% from November 2024 and have fallen over 5% from their 2022 peak. Dane County is in a very similar situation. If you go to the website that was referred to in this article, which is at the top there, it's revealing how consistent the national numbers are with the Dane County numbers. For Dane County, the rent growth rate has decreased significantly since 2023. And as of November of this year, the year-over-year rent has increased just 1/5 of 1%. And the multifamily vacancy rate for October and November of this year in Dane County was a very healthy 7% and 6.9%, respectively. That's really good. That's about perfect. And we have many more units in the works. Even the data for how long it takes to rent a unit is getting longer. There's no data for Dane County specifically. But for the state of Wisconsin, the median time a unit is on the market before it gets rented is just over 45 days, which is much higher and healthier than the national average of 36 days. Heck, even the brand-new Apex development has at least 13 units available if you want to rent beginning now through January 1st. So the bottom line is, there's really no crisis. So it seems to me that there's no reason to place more apartments in a spot that's specifically best suited for a single-family home development. If there is a crisis, it's clearly stated in every report that you find that we need more affordable homes that people can actually buy. So it seems to me that the common council should be working hard on that instead of approving yet another apartment complex that your constituents don't want. That's clear from the envisioned Verona project. I also want to point out that just because Dane County is telling various municipalities that they should approve construction of a certain number of housing units per year, doesn't mean you have to, and you clearly don't have to approve even more than that, especially when the people that elected you are telling you to stop. Please listen to us. Finally, a little humor from me, believe it or not, before the holidays. I'm sure you all recognize this. Only in my version, the football is the longstanding comprehensive plan that we've relied upon. And your neighbors adjacent to the BACIS property are Charlie Brown. Don't be a Lucy. Thanks for your time. I hope you have a wonderful holidays and I look forward to seeing you again. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. We are still in public comment. If anyone else wishes to speak, now would be the time to do so.
Greetings, Mr. Mayor, Verona Common Council, and my fellow citizens of the city of Verona. My name is Jacoby Devere. I am a sophomore at Verona Area High School. And I'm here to support the flying of the pride flag for another year. I did not have a speech planned today. I was not intending to speak. But as a citizen, as an ally, and as a human being, I cannot, under good conscience, sit as a bystander and not speak in support of flying this symbol of inclusion. Inclusion should not be a divisive issue. Inclusion should be the norm. And it is time the city of Verona does whatever is in their power to support that standing. At the high school, there are numerous teachers who fly, who hang a symbol of pride, whether or not they're involved with the GSA as Mick Frankie is and his colleague, Ms. Erica Gallagher. Regardless of that, the teachers and the students of the high school have supported inclusion by supporting the flag. The high schoolers are the next generation of this city. We have spoken in support of this symbol of inclusion. And the city of Verona should replicate that with their support. And I urge you to pass the resolution to hang the pride flag for another year. Thank you.
Thank you. We are still in public comment, so if anyone else wishes to speak, now would be the time to do so. Going once, going twice. Okay. We will move on to item five, which is approve the minutes from the November 24th, 2025 Common Council meeting. Comments, questions, corrections, or motions to approve?
Move to approve.
Motion by Alder Tucker Long. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Swanson. Last chance for corrections. Seeing no corrections, all those in favor of approving the minutes from the November 24th, 2025 Common Council meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes. And we move on to item six, which is mayor's business. First up, 6A, there is no common council meeting on December 22nd. So don't come here. There's not going to be anyone here. And 6B is the appointment of the election inspectors and the special voting deputies for the 2026 to 2027 election cycle. Mr. Olick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In December of the odd-numbered year, for every town, village, and city in the state of Wisconsin, they have a list like this in front of them, which are inspectors who have either been submitted by political parties, Republicans and Democrats in this particular case, or unaffiliated. It is the political party's right to submit names to the governing body to have appointed as election inspectors for upcoming elections over the course of the two-year cycle. So the list is pretty standard. But anyway, according to Clerk Lict, she also has more unaffiliated inspectors than kind of what you see there in order to substitute during the year in case people come and go and things like that. But we do have to have this initial list approved in order to get us going on that two-year cycle.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments, or motions to approve the list? Alder Swanson.
I move to approve the list.
Motion by Alder Swanson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Humke. Motion before the body. Questions or comments on the motion? All right. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of the appointment of election inspectors and special voting deputies for the 2026 to 2027 election cycle as listed in our packet signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes. And with that, we'll move on to item seven, which is announcements. Any announcements from the council? Alder Tucker Long.
Anniversary cards are going around, so make sure you sign them for the staff before you leave. This is for council members.
Any other announcements from the council? Seeing no other announcements, we move on to item eight, which is the administrative report. Mr. Olick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, tonight, we are piloting something, and that is not having Clerk Lict at meetings where the clerk specifically isn't needed. You know, oath of offices, things like that. Clerk Lict will be here, but we kind of talked about it. And, you know, she's got a young family. But also, her time is more effectively used a lot of times in the office than being at these meetings. And I was a former county clerk and city clerk, and I kind of know how that role operates. And so basically, we talked about it. And hopefully, it doesn't look like me trying to ride my oldest son's skateboard. It's not a train wreck or something, so if it goes south, we can always bring her back. But anyway, we'll pilot this and if it goes well, we'll keep going on this track. That's all I got.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Olick? Seeing no questions, we'll move on to item nine, which is engineers report. Ms. Fisher.
Thank you. For the Country View Road project, new hydrants were installed along Country View Court. For Allegiant Street reconstruction, the road is reopened to traffic. Traffic signals and poles are installed and will be tested mid-this month. For the Mark Drive project, construction along Rita Avenue and Plimpton Street is complete for the season. Phase 1 construction will be suspended this winter and will resume next spring. For the Edwards Street project, construction is complete and final vegetation establishment will be achieved next spring. For the Well 6 Rehab project, the nitrate analyzer is procured and will be installed. The utility has continued pumping and sampling. The city is waiting for DNR approval to put the well back online. For Ardent Glen, construction is complete and final vegetation will be achieved in the spring. And finally, for SSM Health, the water main installation is continuing on State Highway 69, Paola Street. Wistad is making a determination how the road is to be left over the winter. Underground utility work is completed on Valley Road with binder asphalt pavement placed. Concrete work will take place in the spring of 2026. So with that, I can take any questions?
Thank you. Any questions on the engineers report? Alder Laitl.
I believe we've talked about this previously, but could you give us the high-level overview of what went right and what went not according to plan with the SSM Health utilities around the 18151?
Yeah, so my understanding is that they hit bedrock and groundwater along the State Highway 69 area. So it's just taken a different construction method than they anticipated and taken a little bit longer.
Any other questions for Ms. Fisher? All right. With that, we will move on to item 10, which is committee reports. First up, we have 10A Finance Committee. Alder Humke.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to payment of the bills in the amount of $2,305,881.18.
Motion by Alder Humke. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Harrison. Motion before the body, or Alder Humke, sorry.
Yeah, there's two major payments that are from that. One is to AECOM for $202,927 for engineering services. The other is to Madison Metro Sewerage District for $1,636,636 for the connection fees to the Epic Campus 6.
Thank you for that explanation. Motion before the body. Questions or comments on the motion to pay the bills? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of paying the bills, the amount specified, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Anything further from finance?
Nothing further, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. We move on to 10B, which is Personnel Committee. Alder Humke.
Yeah, I move to approve the amendment to City Administrative Policy Number 4, Section 3 relating to on-call pay effective the first pay period of 2026.
Motion by Alder Humke. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Keller. Alder Humke.
The Public Works Department currently uses a weekly seven-day on-call rotation among designated staff. Under the current policy, staff required to carry a phone for off-duty calls are eligible to receive $100 stipend per weekly rotation. City staff are recommending the following amendments to the policy. Transition to on-call pay from a weekly to daily basis. The purpose of this change is to allow staff more flexibility to trade on-call days and shifts during their weekly assignment. On-call pay will be paid at $30 a day, which equates to $210 per week. The purpose of the proposed change is to remain competitive with comparable communities. The proposed amendment would become effective the first pay period of 2026.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions or comments on this motion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of approving the amendment to the City Administrative Policy Number 4, Section 3 relating to on-call pay, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Alder Humke.
I move to approve amendment to the City Administrative Policy Number 4, Section 3 relating to compensation and benefits for police sergeants.
Motion by Alder Humke. Is there a second? Second by Alder Tucker Long. Alder Humke.
The proposed amendment eliminates eligibility for police sergeants to receive an additional education incentive as an add-on to their salary. As part of recent classification and compensation study, the consultant recommended eliminating the additional education incentive add-on for police sergeants because education was already accounted for in the job requirements and scoring of the position. This proposed change aligns with the updated classifications and compensation plan that was previously adopted and goes into effect on December 22nd, 2025. Further research also found an educational incentive is generally not paid as part of the pay package for police sergeants in other area, like municipality departments. And staff will be on hand to answer questions, provide further information.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions or comments on this motion? Alder Laitl.
Having not been as involved with the compensation study and the way we're implementing it as some of you on the Personnel Committee, I thought there were some points raised during the public comment that would be really helpful to have our HR director kind of talk through how this is being implemented differently or consistently for police sergeants with other non-represented.
I completely agree. Mr. Warkley?
All right, thank you. So I think I can speak to some of the items that came up in public comment. And then also, I know the council had asked me to do some additional research at the November 10th meeting regarding comps. I can share that as well. So just some background so we're all on the same page here. The topic of discussion here is a education incentive add-on. So what that equates to is represented police employees receive a separate add-on to their base pay based on their education, their highest level degree. So it's 6% for 97 college credits completed, 8% for a bachelor's, and 10% for a graduate degree. So again, this is an add-on percentage to their base pay rate. Police sergeants who are non-represented are also, or historically have been entitled to this same add-on. As part of the compensation study, one of the things the consultant looked at and reviewed was an issue that was, that has been surfacing for a number of years, an issue of compression. So what was happening is our sergeant's pay was becoming very close to lieutenant pay. There is a couple of factors that were contributing to this. One, the sergeants are eligible for overtime and the lieutenants are not. Another factor was sergeants are eligible for this, this education incentive and lieutenants are not. So with overtime and the education incentive, there were scenarios coming up where, again, our sergeants were making very close to the same amount as their lieutenants. In fact, and looking at some numbers even here just recently, in 2024 and in 2025, there are other fringe benefits and entitlements that sergeants, again, non-represented sergeants, receive the same benefits as represented officers. There are other benefits involved. One of those is a holiday payout or holiday policy that have actually resulted in some of our sergeants having higher gross annual earnings than lieutenants. So the lieutenant position is, has more responsibility. This is an issue that we've been looking at for years and we, as a city, asked the consultant to take a look at this. Ultimately, the consultant started reviewing this information, and this was not a surprise. It's something that has been going on in a lot of different communities. And the recommendation from the consultant was to remove the education incentive and account for. account for education in the actual scoring and evaluation of the position. The consultant indicated that this is industry standard. Since the last meeting, I was asked to poll the comps in our area. I did poll the eight comps that were in the study. Seven responded. None of those communities pay a separate education incentive. It is accounted for in the scoring of their position. So with that, and also keeping in mind, and this is sergeant level, address this a little bit, downward, downward compression with officers, there's kind of a sweet spot that needs to be hit. But the goal of the study was to make sure, to find a way that we're treating employees equally in the different employee groups while also keeping them in line with market. And based on that, the decision was that it would be appropriate to remove the education incentive and account for the scoring of the education in the evaluation of the position itself. So ultimately, this ended up, what we looked at was, the consultant actually looked at a couple of different models. So with the position description for the sergeant, this addresses what Sergeant Level brought up about the degree requirement. So the consultant looked at a couple of different models. The education requirement for the sergeant position description that was submitted by Chief Dresser was an associate's degree or equivalent. So we looked at that. The consultant scored it out, and it was scored in, it scored in the, let's see here, just want to make sure I have the right grade. So the sergeant ended up scoring in grade nine on the new scale. We also looked at a model with the consultant, what would it be if we did have a bachelor's as well, and it would still be in grade nine? So there's nine factors that contribute to the scoring of the position. So the point, I think, really here is we're factoring education into the position itself, which is consistent with how other non-rep employee, or other non-rep classifications are handled. So with that, the recommendation then was to place the sergeant position in grade nine without an education incentive. Again, it's really a situation where there's, our non-reps are represented and then our sergeants, and we have to be careful when we look at our sergeants. Again, they have certain entitlements and certain benefits that our non-rep officers get. And to maintain that, to make sure that there's not that downward compression, some of those need to stay for sure, but we need to be careful and also look at the upward compression as well. So the education incentive, given that it was not industry standard, was the recommendation from the consultant to remove that and account for it in the scoring, and hopefully that addresses this issue of compression moving forward.
Any follow-ups, Alder Laitl?
So just, this is mostly a follow-up. In terms of recruiting sergeants versus lieutenants, promotion from within into the sergeant role, can you speak to how that compression has or hasn't affected recruiting and retention for those levels?
This might be something I might refer to Chief Dresser on a little bit more. I mean, we've had a few recruitments, I guess, recently, but you're a little bit more involved with those than I am.
Yeah, we had a recent sergeant's promotional process, and we only had one internal candidate that was interested. And again, officers, they make overtime as well and do, you know, pretty good and without the additional responsibility of supervision. And our last two lieutenant openings that we've had, we've, the first one, we opened it up just to the outside because of newly promoted staff as sergeants and wanted to give them some experience and reputation as a sergeant, learn that position. At this last one, it was opened up to internal and external, and we did not get any internal applicants for the position of lieutenant. And, you know, I understand, you know, I had a lieutenant who messaged me, he did the math, I'd not verified this math, but for 2025, the difference is about seven cents per hour right now between lieutenants and sergeants. And as much as I want to advocate for the sergeants, I can't make both sides happy. If I make the sergeants happy, the lieutenants are mad. If I make the lieutenants happy, the sergeants are mad. We have a great work group, I just want them to be treated fairly. You know, I want to commend Sergeant Level for, you know, he showed a lot of passion. He is organized and he's factual. I understand where he's coming from with this. I mean, they are taking about a $600 pay cut going into next year. That's a hard pill to swallow for anybody. And so, you know, if we can at least make up that $600 gap, so it doesn't feel like a pay cut, that's what I would ask for. As much as I would advocate for keeping the educational incentive, because I do want my patrol officers to be incentivized to promote to sergeant, I can't do it at the expense of the lieutenants. And right now, to date, my lieutenants are not happy because of this wage compression issue. And so, we do have to find a way to fix it. And I guess we can't have the best of both worlds, I'm just asking that, you know, we treat our staff fairly.
Other questions or comments on the motion?
You identified part of the, this is for HR. You identified part of the issue for the source of the wage compression. So some of it's coming from things like the educational incentive and the fringe benefits that the sergeants get as opposed, that the lieutenants don't. And that sort of makes sense. Like, I'd be grumpy about that, too. But it was also identified that overtime was a factor in that, and I guess I don't understand why that's an issue for compression, because like, I don't know, to me, if someone works more hours, they should get paid more. I don't have a problem with someone who gets paid $10 an hour that works twice as many hours as someone that works $15 an hour, taking home more pay. Like, that just doesn't make sense to me. Can you?
Can I answer that?
Yeah, yes.
So as proposed, the lieutenants would make $122,888. Sergeants, $108,420, which again, is actually a little reduction from this year. The difference is $14,468. The compression should actually be more at that point. And now, add in roughly $10,000 that sergeants are going to make for overtime, that takes the compression down to $4,400 over the course of a year. Sergeant Lovell had given example, and, you know, generously, he put himself at a different grade, grade 11, I believe, and that would have brought their wages to $111,000. With the $10,000 overtime per year, it'd be a difference of $1,437. So again, what's the incentive for a sergeant to become a lieutenant if the difference is only $1,437? It needs to be more. I mean, I think Mitch can speak to this, but the consultant, I think, wants around $20,000 separation.
Yeah, there wasn't necessarily a magic number, but, you know, when we look at our, even our grades, when we get up to the upper, the top grades in our grid, there's 15% between them at least. So correct, I mean, it's very close for a lot of, for significantly different responsibility. I do understand the question about the hours worked, though. Chief Dresser, I think, to, what are we looking at for overtime? Is it between maybe 100 and 200 hours a year? Do you have that off the top of your head?
I'm afraid I don't.
Okay. Okay, so, right, it is the hours worked, and we do recognize that. But additionally, too, our lieutenants, our salary and they, I would imagine they do put in some significant hours as well, over 40 on occasion. Again, they are salary, but it does just make it kind of a difficult decision for someone a sergeant. Are they going to want to promote if they're going to have more responsibility and maybe even work the same amount of hours?
I did suggest to Mr. Weckerly today that lieutenants are, it's an exempt position, they do not get overtime. I believe we have latitude that we could allow overtime in certain situations, and there are certain situations, such as special events, where we are paid by others or grants where we're paid by others, where it won't cost the city anything, but would help with that wage compression if we allowed that to occur.
So I guess this is not a question, but sort of a statement of sentiment. I mean, I am generally in favor of paying people for the work they do. And if we could unwork some of the compression by exploring means to find these grants, that these avenues of making sure that lieutenants are getting paid for the extra work that they are also putting in, and that doesn't blow up our budget, that finance worked super hard on, I would be in favor of exploring that. I'm hesitant to approve this amendment without having that already in place. But I understand if the city decides that we just need to get this on the books so that we have a standard that we then work from.
Alder Humke.
Yeah, so I feel really strongly about this, what's been put forward. I hear what is being said by the sergeants. However, you know, there's been a lot of work done, as you can tell by Mitch, by the consultant. We have the information that says that we are not, if we did this, we would be unique in the municipalities that we've been looking at. I think that matters a lot. I also think it matters, I have other, there's other department directors sitting in here in this room, who would probably struggle with their own, then, employees who have elevated educational experiences. I don't know how we would just, I don't, it would be like, we'd be going round and round in circles for every department. We have to have some baseline of what we say is what's happening, and we paid this consultant, who is knowledgeable in this field more than we are, who did the work, who has the experience. I personally believe we have to move forward and be done with this. Like, we just have to take this what it is. And I understand, you know, people are going to advocate for what they want because that's human nature, and they should, right? But sometimes it doesn't always work out in their favor, and we, that's just the way it goes. And I think this is one of those situations where unfortunately, like, the people, I think Chief is right, like, nobody's going to be happy, right? But at the end of the day, like, I am actually in favor of doing, if there's reimbursements for events where we have, there's no financial impact, I actually, that sounds great to me, if that's amenable to. Mitch, I guess that's a question, like, are you, is that, does that fall into, like?
We would have to update other parts of our policy to allow for overtime for exempt employees, as that, no other exempt employees.
Would that be outside the bounds of, like, would you be comfortable with that potentially if it's because it has no impact, that it would only be for that, those types of situations?
I'd like to do a little bit more research on that. And I think the other thing is, this is not, I mean, this is something we need to continue monitoring. We've really been looking at the compression issue for five years, really, just kind of looking at it and how close it's becoming and trying to figure out ways we can address it while still maintaining positions during the market. So I think we can continue to evaluate all of this.
Yeah, and I also want to just comment that I've sit on personnel for, I think this is my third year on personnel, like, we, this is, I mean, this is not like a new discussion to like echo what Mitch is saying, right? We've been talking about a lot of this stuff, even though the study just happened, like, this is a conversation we've been having for years. So this isn't, you know, there's been a ton of thought put into that, and I really do want to honor the thought and advocate for that, because I do feel really strongly that, like, we are in the right place that we need to be in. And again, like, monitoring as we go along, but this, I just don't think is a position that we should be taking about adjusting, so.
Motion before the body, other questions or comments on the motion? Seeing no further discussion. All those in favor of approving the amendment to City Administrative Policy Number Four, Section Three, relating to compensation and benefits for police sergeants, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
And that motion passes with Alder Swanson voting no. Alder Humke.
Okay. I move to approve the collective bargaining agreement for the 2026 through 2028 with the Wisconsin Professional Police Association LEER Division contingent on final approval from applicable city staff and contracted legal counsel for human resource matters.
Motion by Alder Humke, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Swanson, Alder Humke.
The Wisconsin Professional Police Association LEER Division and staff have reached a tentative agreement. The agreement proposes the following changes. In several places, updates language to current practice and procedures, adds a wellness day to focus on mental health, overtime worked on a holiday will be paid at double time, overtime worked over 13 hours will be paid at double time, scheduled and posted special assignments that are created because of an event hosted by a public or private entity that is not the city of Verona that requires an employee to be present. When the employee volunteers to work the assignment, will be paid at double time. Employees ordered to work special assignments shall be compensated at time and one half. It updates language related to the school resource officer. It enhances vacation accrual on several steps of the vacation schedule to closer align with non-represented staff. It includes stepchildren and the definition of immediate family. It increases allowances for uniforms and equipment to account for increasing costs. It incorporates into the contract lateral transfer language from a prior memorandum of understanding. It incorporates tuition reimbursement from the non-represented personnel policy. It includes adjusted pay for detectives from 2.5% to 4% over the top patrol rate to remain competitive with the market. The proposed wage increases for 2026, 27, and 28 are 3%, 4.5%, and 4.5%, respectively, which helps keep Verona a competitive employer to attract and retain high-quality officers. Staff and representatives of Verona Professional Police Association work cooperatively on the collective bargaining agreement, and city staff also recommend approval.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions or comments on this motion?
Yeah, I do just want to add like a couple of things, like questions that came up in case other elders want to know. So when talking about like the paid overtime at double time, it sounds like from the chief, and he can comment if I'm incorrect, is that 13 hours is kind of a more unusual hours. Most hours go up to like 12. So this is not something that's going to happen like at a fast clip. I also want to mention that the wellness day, they're still working through logistics, but, you know, when we talk about wellness days for focusing on mental health, we really, we don't want that to be paid out, we want that to be used. So that's kind of the goal of that day. So there won't be like a financial impact, per se, from us just time away for the staff involved. And I'm just really pleased that they were able to come to understanding how to make this work for all parties, and I'm really grateful, so.
Other questions or comments on the motion? Seeing no further discussion. All those in favor of approving the collective bargaining agreement with the Wisconsin Professional Police Association/LEER Division, 20, from 2026 to 2028, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? And that motion passes. Alder Humke.
I move to approve the interim employment agreement for the position of fire chief.
Motion by Alder Humke, is there a second? Second by Alder Tucker Long, Alder Humke.
A tentative agreement for the position of interim fire chief has been reached. Staff worked with both the Police and Fire Commission and the potential appointee on the interim agreement and recommend approval. Council may convene a closed session to discuss terms and conditions of the agreement, and I'm curious if you think we need to do that. Okay, great.
Mr. Olick, can you reveal the name of the interim fire chief, please?
Yes, yes, I can. Ms. Becky McRight. She was formerly a battalion chief here at the city of Verona, and currently, she's over, well, she's teaching at MATC, but also, I believe, is employed over at the city of Pittsburgh as deputy or battalion chief. I'm not quite sure which position over there, but anyway, that's the appointed, the proposed appointee.
Thank you.
To the position.
Alder Humke.
Yeah, I just want to say that I was really excited. I mean, I have a great relationship, I feel like, with Chief Mahak, and I'm really grateful for the service that he has given us. I have worked with Becky last year during some different situations, we were working on the budget, and I just really appreciated her engagement and how she interacted with the staff and the elders, and I'm really excited for her to be able to take on this role and have some experience in our department already. So I'm excited.
Other questions or comments from the council? Seeing no further discussion. All those in favor of approving the fire chief interim employment agreement contingent upon final approvals, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? And that motion passes. Congratulations. Anything further from Personnel?
Nothing further, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. With that, we will move on to TNC, which is Public Safety and Welfare Committee. Alder Swanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will begin by moving to approve application for Class B fermented malt beverage license from 608 Ventures LLC doing business as 608 Beach Volleyball, located at 1155 Ambition Street, Suite 700, Nicholas Faber agent.
Motion by Alder Swanson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Harrison, Alder Swanson.
Thank you. The applicant is applying for a beer license and for their indoor beach volleyball facility. Staff recommend approval of the license contingent upon final inspections by the building inspector and fire inspector.
And that contingency was part of the motion?
Yes.
And that was the understanding of the second as well?
Yes.
Motion before the body, questions or comments on the motion? Seeing no further discussions. All those in favor of approving the application for a Class B fermented malt beverage license from 608 Ventures LLC doing business as 608 Beach Volleyball, located at 1155 Ambition Street, Suite 700, Nicholas Faber agent with the contingency specified, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? And that motion passes. Alder Swanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next item-
The next item was discussion of possible action regarding ordinance number 25-1078, amending Title X, Chapter One, Section 26, prohibited parking during certain periods. The committee declined to take action recommending either way, desiring more information about the conditions of the area, as well as information from Public Works for clearing the area for like snow removal and stuff.
Gotcha. And staff has been made aware of the request for information, or will be made aware?
Yes, they will be made aware, because we came to that decision about an hour and 45 minutes ago.
Okay. I guess, I guess it's fair to give them a little longer than that. So I guess then I would ask the body, then, if everyone's comfortable, if we can refer this to the next meeting in January. Is that okay? If not, we could, we could discuss it as well. All right, I'm seeing nodding heads. So, all right, we will, by unanimous consent, we will talk about this at the January meeting. Next item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve ordinance number 25-1079, amending Title X, Chapter One, Section 26 related to two-hour parking.
Motion by Alder Swanson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Harrison, Alder Swanson.
The proposed ordinance would create a two-hour parking zone on East Harriet Street adjacent to the Verona Community Center. The intent is to give them a little more control over their parking, especially with expanded responsibilities. I don't know, it makes sense to us, don't see any reason why not. Police Department says they can enforce it. That's all I need.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions or comments on this motion? Alder Tucker Long.
When you say expanded responsibilities, I guess I'm not clear why we need those parking restrictions there.
I did not get much more information, but based on my understanding, with expanded programming, they are concerned about people sort of sitting longer in the area than is amenable for the programming to occur.
And I guess if I could add something as well, sometimes people park in there who aren't there for the community center, and if people park there 12 hours, 24 hours, whatever, there might not be enough parking for community events. So I think it's, my understanding is it's an intention to make sure there's available parking, and hopefully the events are really popular and there's a lot of people there. Alder Homke.
Yeah, what if someone has like a wedding reception there? Like, and they have a wedding reception for like four hours? How would we, is there, do we have a solution for like, someone could put like, I mean, you're right, like, I understand it conceptually, like, that there would be shorter-term events, but like, what if, the idea is to have like bigger events, like, I don't know, anything, right? You think of like a full, like, on a Saturday, someone could say rent it out for a whole day, right, to have people come and have a whole thing where you'd be there for the whole day? Like, what would that look like?
I have a question that I would ask to respond to that to Chief Dresser. Do we have mechanisms in place to allow like closure of a street for private parking for an event? Because I mean, I know that you close down streets for like, when we have like the races and stuff that go through town, it's like no parking here. Do we have an inverse where we say there's some sort of event going on and only attendees can park there?
You know, nothing, we wouldn't close the street down, but it is written in statute that, you know, the police chief can grant parking exceptions, so if there was an event that was going to occur and we were expecting overflow parking, you know, a parking exception could be granted, we would just make sure that the director of Recreation Department conveys that to us and we can convey it to our staff.
Thank you, Chief.
Who asked for this?
The Director, Casey Dudley.
Casey did, okay. Is there any specific, it's just a weird street that I don't know that I would anticipate people just sitting, I mean, it's not, I shouldn't say weird, it's like a street that like, there aren't businesses on the street, there's a church. I mean, I go by that street enough that I don't feel like there's people parking on it a ton. I, I'm just curious if he, if he has like a, there's any information or data that is suggesting-
He did share with me that there is at least one vehicle that routinely parks there for an extended period of time, and they're not there for church business or the community center yet. And so, you know, it's instances like that that we want to, you know, make it clear so it's more accessible, you know, during the hours of business at the community center.
So there's one car on the entire, like, so where, yeah, okay. There's one car on this entire block that is going to be the, I'm sorry, is it the whole, so it's just that one, like, when you say on East Harriet, like that, just that one street?
Yeah, between Main Street and Franklin Street.
And Franklin Street, yes.
So just pretty much the entire front of the rec department.
Okay, okay.
Alder Tucker Long.
Do you know if this is because of the program we're offering for like the after-school program and things like that?
Yes, that is part of the motivation, that we want to make sure, to make sure there is room for parents to drop off students, pick up students.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Motion before the body, other questions or comments? Seeing no further discussion. All those in favor of ordinance number 25-1079, amending Title X, Chapter One, Section 26 related to our parking, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? And that motion passes. Alder Swanson.
Thank you. Move to approve ordinance number 25-1080, creating Title VII, Chapter 15, Regulation and Licensing of Short-Term Rentals.
Motion by Alder Swanson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Harrison, Alder Swanson.
Thank you. The Public Safety and Welfare Committee reviewed an initial ordinance at their meeting on November 10, 2025. Comments from the committee included general support for the creation of a license project process for short-term rentals and questions on how penalties would be determined. The ordinance is being introduced to the common council for their consideration.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions or comments on this motion? I'll just say real quick, thank you for staff for working through this issue, and thank you the neighbors for their patience. There's a lot of litigation surrounding this issue, and it took staff a lot of time to work through all the issues. I think generally, I mean, speaking just for myself, I'm not opposed to short-term rentals, but we want to make sure that they're well-run, and that they're run by responsible people, and we don't want the neighborhood to bear the brunt of someone who's irresponsible. And this will give us tools to make sure that doesn't happen, or at least make it less likely to happen. Other questions or comments? Alder Leno.
So, looking through this, it references a fee schedule that is in, fees reference Title III, Chapter VI. I'm assuming this isn't an existing city fee schedule, this is being implemented to support this new ordinance? Or is this an existing fee schedule that we already have?
Mr. Severson.
Yeah, rather than putting a specific fee in here, which would get, need to be updated on a periodic basis, we have a citywide fee schedule that's updated with the annual budget, and so this would be part of that. If you have an, we're certain, I mean, I guess we were thinking about an idea for a reasonable fee, we would treat it similar to, you know, other applications, such as like outdoor cafe licenses, but I would assume like a fee of around like $100 would be pretty typical for something like this. I think once we understand the administrative time that applications take to review, and then following up on complaints and questions, we'll have a better sense, but $100 is a pretty low fee, so that's what I would anticipate.
Yeah, I want to be clear that I'm definitely in support of taking this new approach to try to get our arms around it. I was just unclear on, will there be a separate approval for a fee, or for the time being, the fee is zero? Like, how does this get implemented from where we are now to a year from now?
Yeah, so that would be, it would be, it would have to be introduced as part of a change to the fee schedule.
So just confirming, this gets enacted, this gets approved tonight, I don't know, there's some administrative period for enacting it, and until we change the fee schedule, that section doesn't exist for short-term rentals, and so there would be no fee.
Yeah, if I could-
For some period of time.
My understanding is this is going to be implemented in April. Is that correct, Mr. Severson?
Correct.
So then, basically, we have till April.
Very good, thank you.
But I think what I heard at, when this was, this had been discussed at previous meetings, the idea was to keep the initial fee low, but then if there's violations, encourage the court to provide steeper penalties. So that was the intent.
Alder Homke.
Yeah, so to piggyback off of that, because my question was similar, is like, you're going to come back and tell us what the fine is as well, based on, at some-
So, as recommended from our city attorney, those, the fees are typically not put in the, in the ordinance or in the license information, but rather sort of up to the municipal court who enforces those penalties.
And there's no suggestions that we make, because like, for the, so will you-
There are, so just within, within the city code of ordinances, like violations to that have a standard violation fee, and then with each additional offense, that increases. But it is, there's a minimum fee, and then if there's something that the court deems a higher fee is appropriate-
And is that something that the police department would, like, like, how does that, is that, that's how it, is that how it works? Like, if like a neighbor, like, I just want to make it sure we're really clear on how the neighbors then go about, because they're going to probably call the police if they're having an issue, like, is that who deals with it initially?
So it'd be, it would be dependent upon what kind of violation it is. I mean, if it's like a noise violation, you know, disturbing the peace, those types of complaints would probably go to like the non-emergency line, I imagine, and whoever's, you know, the responding officer is, would, would take care of that complaint. But there's other, there's other issues, such as like trash, that would probably go to code enforcement, which is in the building department, or Public Works if it's related to like a totter. So there's different places that complaints could go to, but either one of those departments could issue a citation.
I just want to make sure that whatever it is that we resolve to be, that it's very clear, because we had the, when we were talking about the fire, fire burning, like, it was just, there was this big disconnect about who was responsible. So I just want to make sure that when we do this, that it's very clear to whoever's being called, that like, they're not looking at the other department thinking, well, I'm do, you're doing this, I'm doing, so I just wanted to be really clear, whatever it is, that like, everybody knows what needs to happen, because I'm guessing based on what the neighbors have said, that there will be calls probably pretty quickly, so, okay.
And that's how we've been doing it, like, we've been encouraging the neighbors, if there's, if there's violations, such as like criminal activity or noise, you know, any like disturbing the peace, to call the non-emergency line in those cases. And they also know if there's issues related to like totters being out, sideboxing plowed, that would be initially directed to Public Works.
Okay. I would just, my only comment is I'd like the fees to be, or the, sorry, the penalties be enough that they makes a difference to the person of the owner of the property, that they feel the, that it's significant enough that they would want to change their behavior, so.
And I think, like, along those lines, not only the, I mean, monetary fine is something that would, you know, dissuade someone from violating the code, but even, I think what this, what this license approval process provides us with is the, is the ability to revoke a license if there's multiple offenses. So I think that's probably even more, in my minds, it's going to be more effective than even a fine.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Klimar, did you have anything to add?
I just wanted to say, my understanding is the code language essentially when, for penalties, refers back to our general penalty provisions that are already in the city code that apply to other violations of ordinances. If it turns out that the council doesn't believe that those penalties are sufficient enough, you always have the ability to amend this particular ordinance to add specific penalties that, you know, related to violations of short-term rentals. Obviously, they have to be within reason. I mean, we can't have something that's dramatically greater than what is in our general penalty provisions. But I also agree with what Lucas said, I think here, the real hammer that the city is going to have is ultimately, if somebody is repeatedly violating the ordinance, they're simply not going to get, be allowed to have a short-term rental, and that's, that's the true impact.
Alder Homke.
Yeah, I, so from a financial impact, though, Mr. Klimar, like, you know, if we have legal costs, like, all that stuff is very expensive, and like, our staff time is expensive, so how, I guess I just want to make sure we bake that into the cost of the penalty, because when we're-
We can't.
We can't?
We can't bake, like, like, the attorney time to prosecute a citation, we can't bake it in. I mean, I would, I mean, if it helps at all, and it is probably, and I'm saying this, and if I was in the room, Chief might throw something at me, but it's generally the case that to enforce our ordinance is, is, we lose money. And that is, and that's not just the case for Verona, but that's the case for every municipality. But there's a belief that, notwithstanding the fact that each time we, you know, have to take time to enforce an ordinance and potentially issue a citation or consult with legal counsel, that it's just, there's a principle here that we need to enforce our ordinances. But we are not allowed to bake attorney time or attorney cost into the penalty provisions for this, for this section of the code, or for any section of our code.
Okay, that, that's super helpful. Then can you explain to me if someone violates, or if they get their license revoked, then like, what, what then happens? Like, how do, are we able to, I know we get a lot of contact information from, which I thought it was really great, the effort that you all went into, but like, is it then, we can submit information to like Airbnb, or like, to have their listing removed, or is that how that works? Or, like, how do we ensure, just because we say your license revoked?
Well, I mean, if someone license, if someone's license is revoked, and then they continue to operate, that's where essentially, every time they do it, every single day, becomes another citation.
Got it.
And we are allowed, even under our general provisions, to increase the amount for each violation.
Got it.
The truth is, the vast, most of the times when we are talking to a property owner to get them to change their conduct, because they're in violation of our ordinances, whether it's this ordinance or a different one, that's usually what it takes, is multiple citations that now start adding up, so there's truly a fine, not only the idea that they're doing something that's inappropriate, now they're really facing a financial impact. And if someone has had their license revoked, and then they are still operating, one, it's going to be a pretty clear violation, and then two, if they're doing it on a daily basis, we will cite them on a daily basis.
That's super helpful. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Motion before the body, any questions or comments on the motion? Alder Tucker Long.
As one of the elders from District Four, I just want to say thank you so much for working on this, we really appreciate it. I know it's been a tough haul with all of the crazy decisions that have come down in the courts and trying to realign what we've been looking at to fit with each new decision, and I just want to say thank you. I'm very grateful this is moving forward, and I hope it helps. Thanks.
Other questions or comments on the motion? Seeing no further discussion. All those in favor of ordinance number 25-1080, creating Title VII, Chapter 15, Regulation and Licensing of Short-Term Rentals, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? And that motion passes. Anything further from public safety?
Nothing further, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. With that, we'll move on to Tennessee, which is Plan Commission, Alder Swanson.
Thank you. Move to approve ordinance number 25-1081, zoning text amendment to Section 13-1-133 subsection E for short-term rentals.
Motion by Alder Swanson, is there a second? Second by Alder Tucker Long, Alder Swanson.
Thank you. The Plan Commission held the required public hearing on December 1, 2025 with no comment from the public. Comments from the Plan Commission include clarification regarding the proposed language and if the proposal is driven by existing complaints. Plan Commission voted 5-0 to recommend the Common Council approve a zoning text amendment to Section 13-1-133E, short-term rentals per the modified language.
Yeah, I guess if I could just add, this is basically the companion zoning text change that goes with what we just approved and in licensing. Question, Alder Keller.
Short term should be hyphenated when you're modifying the word rental, I'm just saying.
We'll pass that along and make sure it's correct in the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Seeing no further discussion. All those in favor of ordinance number 25-1081, zoning text amendment to Section 13-1-133 per N E for short-term rentals, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? And that motion passes. Alder Swanson.
Thank you. Move to approve Resolution Number 25-034, conditional use permit to allow for permanent outdoor storage located at 6880 County Highway M.
Motion by Alder Swanson, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Alder Keller. Alder Swanson.
Thank you. The Plan Commission held the required public hearing on December first, twenty twenty five for the conditional use permit with no comment from the public. Comments from the Plan Commission related to the conditional use permit included questions about the salt shed and if Western Landscaping provides snow plumbing services. It is confirmed they offer snow plumbing services and we need access to the salt storage during evening hours. The Plan Commission voted five zero to recommend to recommend the common council approve a conditional use permit for permanent outdoor storage located at six eight eight zero County Highway M. As an additional note, the staff report for this project includes all the information presented to the Plan Commission, which includes information about the site plan review and the conditional use permit review. Common Council is only reviewing the conditional use permit request for permanent outdoor storage as the site plan is solely approved by the Plan Commission. So we are just talking about the CUP for permanent outdoor storage.
Thank you. Questions or comments on the motion from the council? Alder Layton.
I will try to keep this as CUP focused as possible, but I while I'm very happy to see a local business succeed and grow, the 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 use at the the facility has created less than ideal visual appeal and so the outdoor storage that's part of the approval here, I think will help with that. I'm also very encouraged that they have had discussions with some of the neighbors that were concerned about issues, other issues related to the site plan approval. And so we'd thank them for that and just make sure we're monitoring that things get implemented consistent with the site plan that was approved.
Alder Humke.
I have two questions. One of them is just more like a how this works question because I'm just not as familiar with the Plan Commission. There is, you know, suggestions about different things and maybe the where this is where I like don't know if I'm asking the question about the thing that we're supposed to be talking about. There's like suggestions about how they're implementing things and it's just a suggestion, not a requirement. Is that correct?
Mr. Stevenson.
Well, there are recommended conditions that that are in the that were in the report and those conditions were approved by the by the Plan Commission. So there were.
So like if they don't follow it for some reason, what is the consequence of that?
That would be that would be a violation to our zoning ordinance and would be similar to what Brian, Mr. Mr. Klimar was just discussing. It would be something that would be enforceable.
Okay. And then my second question was, and again, this it tell me if this is not related, but there was like a a container that was there that was not permitted and like that just feels like it's glossed over and like is that like how do we manage that and how do like to me, it seemed odd that we're like, oh, well, it's that's how it read to me.
Yeah, so they had a outdoor that was sort of the impetus for them seeking this is they had the outdoor storage container, they were storing some things on site. We did ask them to remove some of the items and they did. But for a for a conditional use permit typically if something is like discovered, like, hey, did you know that this requires a conditional use permit? Typically work with them to allow them to keep whatever they have while they're going through the process. If it's denied, they would then it would need to be removed. In this case, it would be.
So this is to remove like this is to I I was trying to decipher the okay, so this is to try to help remove that so that will disappear at some point once the.
Sorry, the 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 storage container would would remain, but now it's good now it's being screened and it's actually getting it's actually getting like the proper approvals.
Okay. So you so in general, like we're like we think that it's I'm trying I just make sure I'm talking about the right stuff that like we're good because the neighbors seem to be better with this this is going to solve some of the situation.
Yeah, there was when this case first came up, there was it's going to fit concern about the impact that the outdoor storage would would have on on the neighborhood. And so staff worked with the applicant for quite a long time, really fine tuning and getting this to a point where it was something that could be presented to the public and, you know, likely approved. So the applicant did do quite a bit of work to to do a tree survey, to figure out exactly where the trees are that we want to keep. And then that dictated their design. And so they did make some revisions to the location of their outdoor storage yard, the location of their retaining wall.
Okay.
And so they there was quite a bit of back and forth on this and I think it's in the end, it's something that should work well for for both the the business and the neighborhood.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Alder Tucker Long.
Is there any concern with the salt storage being so close to like the water tower and North Main pump stations?
Ms. Fisher?
So I did do a little checking on that. It needs to be at least well, if it's over a thousand pounds of salt, it needs to be at least twelve hundred feet from our well. It is less than that. I think it's two hundred and fifty pounds is what your your report said, but it's also greater than twelve hundred feet from the well.
Great, thanks.
Other questions or comments on the motion? Seeing no further discussion. All those in favor of resolution number two five dash zero three four conditional use permit to allow for permanent outdoor storage located at sixty eight eighty County Highway M signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Anything further from Plan Commission?
Sorry, nothing further, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. With that, we move on to item eleven, new business. First up, we have eleven A, which is a discussion possible regarding resolution number two five dash zero three five supporting collaboration with participating communities to explore the creation of a joint fire and EMS district. Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. The City of Verona currently provides community based community city based fire services for fire services while using a district based model through an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Pittsburgh and Town of Verona to provide community EMS service. Fire services are solely funded by the city and EMS services are funded by the cities of Verona and Pittsburgh and the Town of Verona. Chief elected officials and administrators of the Village of Oregon, City of Verona and City of Pittsburgh have recently discussed the possible exploration of forming a joint fire and EMS district to serve the three communities. As a result of these discussions, there's there is an interest from the communities to collaboratively explore the feasibility and benefits of forming a joint fire and EMS district. An analysis of the steps required to form a joint fire and EMS district, integrate operations and establish a timeline for implementation will support informed decision making by the communities. The resolution before you demonstrates the Verona Common Council's support to collaborate with the Village of Oregon and or City of Pittsburgh on the exploration of the feasibility and benefits of forming a joint fire and EMS district. In addition, this resolution direct directs staff to work jointly with their counterparts to prepare a report and or analysis to include the statutory and administrative steps necessary to establish a joint fire and EMS and EMS district, options and recommendations for operational staffing and administrative integration, assessment of financial capital and service level impacts and a proposed timeline for decision making, district formation and transition of services.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments or motions on this item? Alder Humke.
Okay. So I really appreciate the fire staff coming tonight. I really appreciate the speaking. I've also had an opportunity to talk to Chief Mauka about this just over time. I have a lived experience personally of being a part of chairing the finance committee, chairing the personnel committee. I personally really like having like oversight directly with the fire department. I see directly how it impacts our abilities to make decisions, both for personnel, for financial. You know, it's it's good to hear that like the actual lived experience impact and I actually like hope maybe to come over to the firehouse and talk to you all more. It'd be really helpful for me. I have seen for me personally too, like the disconnect between the EMS and how there's oversight from a district and that we really do lose significant amounts of control when we do have a district. And I, you know, it's a struggle because I do think that like there is a financial impact to some of this that is real. So from the finance side of things like that's a real thing, but also having the ability to make decisions directly, that's real too. And so I'm also a person who likes data and I think information is helpful. So I'm in favor of this moving forward, but I'm not necessarily in favor of it in general. So I think getting in from I'm getting more information to see if there is like significant savings. I think that's a piece I just don't understand like how much money are we talking about? Right? That's what I don't know. And maybe and I don't know, maybe I don't know enough about what you all can what this is going to be talking about and maybe that would be some clarity that I could get to make a decision about whether I would vote for this or not vote for this.
I mean, I guess just a clarifying point and and Mr. Allen can correct me if I'm wrong, but like technically voting for this resolution doesn't mean we're obligated.
Right.
Correct. And again, if if you think making a district is a bad idea, I mean, I guess you could save staff some time by saying, well, we just shouldn't do it and then staff wouldn't have spending time on it. If you're still open to it, this is a no obligation way to get more information. I mean, I as the as the council voted a month month in in the past to not fund the study, I mean, Oregon and and Pittsburgh are going forward with it and they're spending the money and and since it's a public document, we'll get a seat anyway, even though we didn't pay for it. But I I I guess, you know, just yeah, sorry, just where we are.
Can I get to ask a question then? If we if they move forward with that and we don't, would we then create a fire EMS like unit of our own? Is that the idea is like just so I'm understanding like it's this or this? Do we know that information?
At the risk of I don't want to get too off topic because alternates are not really on the agenda.
Okay, that's fine.
And also, I don't think staff has spent a lot of time talking about it, but it is just I think if Pittsburgh were to make its own district, they would most almost certainly withdraw from the EMS district, which would leave us in the Town of Verona and and then, of course, it would be up to us in the town if we want to remain in the EMS district.
Do you okay, do you have a sense of how much a savings is going to be like? Do you have any like is I know you okay.
I mean, to me, without specific numbers, the biggest potential costs are savings on equipment. I I'm skeptical that we'll save money on personnel and as we heard during public comment, we might not necessarily get better service. The potential that maybe only have one ladder truck or not need as many vehicles and provide better like capital coverage. To me, that seems like a potential thing, but I guess I haven't seen a study that shows operating costs come down.
Okay. Thank you.
Other got Alder Keller, then Alder Swanson.
Relative to data points and, you know, based on what we heard tonight from some of our fire district, fire department folks, will the 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 thoughts and opinions of staff be taken into consideration like as a data point in this as we move forward? If we if we vote yes, will that be can we formalize some kind of a data point so that we understand like what what the folks that would be like directly impacted by their work life?
I think.
What they think about this?
Yeah, I mean, I think as part of it, we can definitely commission, especially Mitch, now that he left, we can definitely assign work to him. But he can be could be assigned to survey the fire department and get feedback because ultimately the data point won't it'll it'll be a data point for the council in in making a decision.
Right, I just don't want like I just don't want it to be all numbers. Like I think I think the human element of like what it's like to go to work every day is really important. So I would like to have that as part of the total picture that we're paint that we're painting as we move forward.
Alder Swanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, in general, I like knowing more to knowing less. So continuing to participate seems like the right idea to me, but also, you know, I I don't want to have a fire department that feels alienated from their community. So if that's a a real concern of the the district, then I I I hope that that comes out in the information that we get back. So I I'm in favor of continuing to remain in the conversation because I want to hear what's going on. But I I mean, the the testimony today is probably shouldn't call it testimony. The the statement made today has made me concerned about the the relative efficacy of the district.
Alder Layton, then myself.
And I think we can keep this within the the topic at hand. The public comment referenced a letter or a notice that was received. Understanding how that does or doesn't fit into this resolution would be helpful for me.
Mr. Allen?
I think it goes back to the the prior discussion about communicating with staff that Alder Keller brought up is, yeah, we want to talk and engage with, you know, the firefighters and possibly paramedics that are involved in this. And so that's why that was the point of that letter is to start that process and discussion. See, ask what they see as far as, you know, pinch points on this process or what have you and and get their feedback. It's really what the point of the letter was.
I guess and I could add as someone who's in the room when when the letter was drafted, part of it too was was concerned that firefighters would be concerned that this was be an opportunity to eliminate their jobs, not based on performance, but based on like you reshuffle the chairs and he's like, well, you're out of work. It's like, well, what did I do wrong? It's like, nothing, we just want a new people. And so the theory of the letter was that if we were to communicate better with people, we would bring them in earlier. And this is just me speaking, but like there's no like nobody should lose their jobs over this, no matter what the cities do and the village does.
So specifically the reference to the distribution of that letter, is that based on a shift lead? Was that based on going out to chiefs and not others? Like, how was to how was that letter distributed to the fire department staff in general?
Yep, it was it was sent to the IFF three eleven representative represents that that particular union represents Oregon, Pittsburgh and and Verona.
So I guess then if I could do do the follow up like and since I was in the room, I probably should know this, but who made the determination to only send it to the representative staff? Because I don't I don't I don't remember talking about it.
I I don't either, other than we were going to send a communication to the union. That's really that's the source of of that.
Okay. Calling on myself. I started out, I think, a little more enthusiastic about becoming and then Alder Tucker Long, becoming a district at the beginning of this process, but kind of the more I learn about it and the more I've talked to to some firefighters, I've become a lot more skeptical of whether it's really going to work. I I think that the Fitcher on EMS provides a high level of service that I'm very confident in, but there have been incidents in the past where both the city of of Verona and at least my impression of of what I've heard from the city of Pittsburgh is they don't feel like they actually have oversight over it. And sometimes the district just kind of does its own thing. And I I worry that we would get ourselves into a similar situation where something might make sense for Pittsburgh or Oregon or who know whatever other municipalities are part of the district and it wouldn't make sense for for Verona because we do have some unique concerns here. Epic is one of them, both in the service that they might need and in the way equalized value affects what we might pay. And so my big concern is is providing the best fire protection and and EMS because the fire department does that as well to the the people of Verona because that's that's our job. And so I would worry that a district would potentially lose focus on that. It's really hard for me to say stop talking because I always like getting more information, but I I guess I just want to say I've just become a lot more skeptical of it and that it's actually going to improve service as as if it gets implemented. Alder Tucker Long.
Thank you. I am not in favor yet. I haven't been convinced that a joint fire is going to be a good idea. I will say I'm always in favor, you know, of knowing more information rather than less as Alder Swanson mentioned. However, the language of this resolution pledging support for collaboration, the wording just is way too strong for me. I'm fine if we want to continue receiving information about this or, you know, learning more about it, but I don't want to spend a lot of time and resources on this is sort of where I'm at.
Other questions, comments or motions on this item? Of course, if oh, sorry, Alder Swanson.
Yes, I how how easy is it for us to remain apprised of the situation without passing this resolution?
That would probably depend on the city of Pittsburgh and this Village of Oregon's disposition. I think I I think it we're a big enough player that you would think that they would would want us involved, but on the other hand, they don't have to have us involved. So like they could be like, all right, well, thanks for when we do something publicly, you'll know about it. Or they could keep us apprised. It's it would really be up to them. Other thoughts? And of course, if if nobody wants to make a motion, we could just move on to the next item and and consider that an answer. Alder Tucker Long, then Alder Humke.
I was just going to ask if we need a motion to not approve this or?
I do not believe we need a motion not to approve it.
Okay. In that case, it'd be my preference that we just move on to the next topic.
Alder Humke.
That's what I was going to suggest, too.
Okay, so unless anyone wants to make another comment or make a motion? Alder Layton.
I would just say I think it's very important for us to understand the impacts of levels of service and staff retention and the great service we're getting. I also think it would be unfortunate if these other entities went ahead and moved into a district and could tout whatever in the way of savings in their levy and our citizens turn to us and say, well, did you look into it? Did you?
Did you look at how much that would potentially raise or lower our, our costs to participate in Fitchron EMS or to maintain our own fire district? And if we don't have an answer for that, I think we've missed an opportunity to put the information out there indirectly, at least, in front of our citizens. So if the council's not comfortable moving forward with this resolution, I hope that doesn't mean we find ourselves on the outside of getting that data and having the full picture.
Uh, so again, I, I would ask one last time if anyone wants to make a motion, otherwise we'll move on to the next topic. All right. Uh, with that, we will move on to the next topic, uh, which is 11B, a discussion on possible action regarding the access easement, which is the access to the parking lot at the Century School Park, Art House 360. Mr. Ollin?
Thank you, Mayor. The proposed easement provides for access to a parking lot on the west side of Century School Park, or also south of 401 West Verona Avenue, also known as Art House 360. Further, it provides that the first party to remove snow and ice from either the Grantor property or the Grantee property following a snowfall shall also remove snow and ice from the easement area, and, and the cost share of repair or maintenance of the easement is split on a 50/50 basis. Staff worked collaboratively, collaboratively with the property owner on the easement and recommend approval.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments, or motions? Alder Humke.
I move to approve access easement for access parking lot for Century School Park and Art House 360.
Uh, motion by Alder Humke, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Keller. Uh, motion before the body, questions or comments on the motion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of approving the access easement, which is access to the parking lot, Century School Park, Art House 360, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. And that motion passes. Uh, without, move on to 11C, which is a discussion on possible action regarding the electric vehicle charging station site host agreement at the city center and the library sites between the city of Verona and Dane County. Mr.?
Yep, I, I got it.
No, Mr. Ollin.
We're good. In August 2024, the US DOT announced that Dane County and its partners will receive $13.2 million in funding to implement Charge Up Dane County. This funding comes from the bipartisan infrastructure law. Charge Up Dane County is a regional initiative to install EV charging stations at locations that would otherwise be unserved. The city of Verona submitted four sites for consideration to receive the new charging stations. Dane County selected two to proceed, uh, two sites to proceed, the city hall site and the public library site. The other two sites, the public lot on Park Lane near the shelter at Hometown Community Park, the public lot on the Park Lane and near the shelter at Hometown Community Park are still being considered. By signing this agreement, the city of Verona agrees to host the charging stations, which will be funded, installed, and maintained by the county for the first five years. The city will provide the electricity and collect a fee from people using the stations that will cover all city costs associated with them. After five years, the charging stations will become the property of the city of Verona. And also, uh, I have the Assistant City Administrator Anne Freiwald and Attorney Kleinmeyer on, online also tonight, if there's any questions associated with this.
Uh, Alder Swanson, then Alder Tucker long.
Uh, I guess I'll, I'll start with a question for either, either Anne or, or Attorney Kleinmeyer. It, this seems like just a good deal. Like, am I dumb for thinking that?
Not, not for that.
I, I don't think it's, I don't think you're dumb. I do believe it will be a good deal for the city of Verona.
Yeah, I agree with that. I mean, there, there are some costs associated with this. I would say the majority of them would be intended to be recovered by the city for, when, when somebody actually uses the charging station. So there's language in the agreement that really gets at that issue when, when you look at sections 15, 16, 17. And that's, so that's on page four of the agreement. There are other costs that we're not necessarily going to be able to recover, but we might, you know, we'll probably, we would probably incur them anyway. For example, you know, wherever the EV charging stations are, we're going to have to make sure that we have appropriate lighting for safety purposes, but we'd have lights in those parking lots anyway, for example, at the library. We're going to have to plow the parking areas, but we're, we're doing that anyway. So I don't think that there's significant costs associated with that, but, and I think I would, what I would add to is, and I, and I think Anne would agree, this has been a very collaborative process between Dane County and the city of Verona, and in fact, some other communities that have also worked with Dane County to update the agreement. The, the one thing that I did want to note, and, and city staff does support this, and so the recommended motion from city staff is motion to approve the electric vehicle charging station site host agreement for the city center and library sites between the city of Verona and Dane County, subject to final review and approval by the city administrator and city attorney. When you do look at section 13 that is in the packet, so I'm looking at page 227 of the packet, we've actually, uh, since, since the agreement was put in the packet, we, we made a few changes to this. There is going to be an operation and maintenance agreement that Dane County, uh, at this point, I think it's going to be Dane County and a third-party vendor. When you look at page 227 of the packet, initially, a co, a copy of that agreement was going to be included with the agreement. However, under those terms, essentially, what, what I had told Dane County, the attorney for Dane County, and that another attorney had told Dane County is, that's fine, we can have the operation and maintenance agreement be a part of this agreement. However, we can't really formally approve this agreement until we actually see the operation and maintenance agreement. That apparently caused some problems for Dane County as it's seeking to pursue, uh, or at least finalize the federal funding that it's going to receive. And so essentially, what we've done, and, and I've looked at this language and I support it, is we're going to remove the reference to the O and M agreement as, as being a, a, an exhibit to the charging agreement, and there's going to be new language, and if it's okay, Mayor, I'm just going to read the new language, it'll just take a second. It would say, the parties acknowledge that the O and M agreement will not be executed until after the effective date of this agreement. The county agrees to provide the O and M agreement to the site host, in our case, the city of Verona, prior to the start of the EV station construction, so that we can review and approve the O and M agreements. If we, if we determine in our, you know, sole discretion that we don't like the terms and conditions of the O and M agreement, we can essentially get out of this EV charging station agreement with no liability. So that provides the protection to the city that we need, that we would be able, you know, and I don't anticipate that we're going to see an O and M agreement that we're not going to have a problem with, but obviously, you, you got to be able to see it before you can truly say that. But we now have the language in the agreement that we would need to get out if that were to arise. That allowed staff to change the recommended motion from the one, you know, I, I just read. We had some more language in, in the first recommended motion, but we, we modified that. So bottom line is, I agree with, with Anne that this is a good deal for the city. It's been a good process working with Dane County, and I'm, you know, that's, that's the reason for the recommended motion. Our motion would include that new language in the agreement, and certainly here to answer any other questions you might have.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Alder Tucker along.
This is a question for Attorney Kleinmeyer. I thought recent legislation passed made it illegal for local municipalities to own or operate electric vehicle charging stations that are open to the public. Is this how, somehow different?
Yeah, there's actually a specific exception for this, for this.
Sweet. Okay, thanks.
That was, dude, that was actually the first thing that I looked at when Anne and Jamie sent to me a copy of this agreement.
Uh, other questions or comments? Or motions? Alder Swanson.
I move to approve, uh, the electric vehicle charging station site host agreement, city center and library sites between the city of Verona and Dane County, subject to final approval of the city attorney and city administrator.
Motion by Alder Swanson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Tucker long. Uh, motion before the body, questions or comments on the motion? It is a really good deal for the city. Seeing no further discussions, uh, all those in favor, approve the electric vehicle charging station site host agreement at city center and library sites between the city of Verona and Dane County, subject to final approval by the city administrator and the city attorney, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. And that motion passes. Uh, without, we will move on to 11D, which is a discussion on possible action regarding resolution number 25-036, resolution to publicly, publicly support the LGBTQIA+ community and fly the Progress Pride Flag at designated city facilities in 2026. Uh, Mr. Ollin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This resolution provides that the city of Verona will fly the Progress Pride Flag at all designated municipal locations during 2026 to celebrate and inspire strength and resilience, create alliances, and establish a safe, inclusive, and welcoming environment in our community.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Alder Humke? Or motions?
I move to approve resolution number 25-036, resolution to publicly support the LGBTQIA+ community and fly the Progress Pride Flag at designated facility, city facilities in 2026.
Motion by Alder Humke, is there a second?
Second. Second.
Oh, geez. That was like everyone, I think Alder Harrison had it. Motion before the body, questions or comments on the motion? Or, yeah, questions or comments? Uh, Alder Swanson, then Alder Tucker long.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As much as I'd like to just have no comments and just immediately approve this, because I think that it's worth it, I do think that it's important for us to say something about this. I'm going to choose to speak to the, the nature of, of flags. I don't recite the pledge when we get up and give it here. And part of the reason is that while the idea that the, that the United States flag should represent all of us, that everyone should feel welcome under its aegis, that its liberty and justice should apply to us all, I think it is more true than it has been in a long, long time that that is not the case right now. And as long as we have an outgroup that the law binds but does not protect, and an in-group that the law protects and does not bind, it is important that we extend the aegis of Verona to those who are not protected by the United States flag. And for that reason, I support flying the pride flag, the Progress Pride Flag all year long.
Uh, Alder Tucker long, then myself, and then Alder Humke.
Um, I just want to say thank you so much to everyone who came out and spoke, or sang to us, or read comments to us. Public comment, I know, is very scary. I gave public comment a few weeks ago at another meeting, and I was terrified, even though I know all these people and do it every time. But it's a big deal when you come and speak, and I want you to know that it makes a big difference to all of us. Also, I'm super proud of the resolution that Mara and I wrote, so I would like to read it to all of you. So this is the city of Verona, resolution number 25-036, resolution to publicly support the LGBTQIA2+ community and fly the Progress Pride Flag at designated city facilities in 2026. Whereas LGBTQIA2+ people make profound contributions to every facet of the city of Verona's cultural, economic, educational, and community life. Whereas Verona is proud to be the home of groups that support and uplift the LGBTQIA2+ community through all stages of life, from youth to elders. Whereas we recognize the achievements of the LGBTQIA2+ community and realize that we must remain committed to protecting hard-won liberties, combating hateful rhetoric and policies that target Verona's LGBTQIA2+ community, and continuing to work to ensure that all LGBTQIA2+ people are welcome, included, treated with dignity and respect, and have access to the support and resources they need to be successful and thrive. Whereas the lack of awareness and understanding of issues facing LGBTQIA2+ individuals has contributed to higher rates of suicide, school dropout, harassment, and increased mental health challenges. Whereas public declarations of support and education regarding LGBTQIA2+ issues increase understanding and cultivate respect for the LGBTQIA2+ community. Whereas policies that specifically mention sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression are associated with citizens feeling safer, decreased incidences of harassment, and a greater reporting of incidents. Whereas in 1982, Wisconsin led the nation in supporting the LGBTQIA2+ community by becoming the first state in the nation to pass a gay rights law. Whereas same-sex couples have had the right to legally marry in all 50 states for over a decade, yet this right is still being challenged. Whereas all Verona residents should be able to live and work in a safe and inclusive community free from discrimination. Whereas the Pride Flag celebrates things that all of us share and deserve, with red representing life, orange representing healing, yellow representing sunlight, green representing nature, blue representing peace and harmony, and violet representing spirit. Whereas the Progress Pride Flag adds a chevron whose colors represent vulnerable and marginalized groups that deserve safety and support, whose orientation facing right represents that we all move forward together, and whose placement on the left side of the flag represents that while progress is being made, there is still a lot of work to be done to create a safe and inclusive environment for all. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city of Verona will fly the Progress Pride Flag at all designated municipal locations during 2026 to celebrate and inspire strength and resilience, create alliances, and establish a safe, inclusive, and welcoming environment in our community. So thank you, everybody.
Calling on myself, and then Alder Humke. Yeah, I want to say I appreciate all the public comment, but especially the person who said that the, the flag was, you know, inclusive, inclusive for all people. And I really appreciate that sentiment. However, like, as a straight person, we don't, we don't need a flag right now, and I'm glad we don't need a, need a flag. There's already enough oppression in the world, and right now, it's very clear that the federal government is targeting, targeting people in the LGBTQ community. It is morally wrong, and it also is a shocking waste of, of resources, when there are so many needs in every community, even a community that's as wealthy as Verona. We could use everything from another police detective position to, uh, enhance pickleball facilities. And, and just seeing the money wasted, targeting especially transgendered individuals, is just, to me, is, is just, is just a shame. And so I, I, I feel like, yes, the flag should represent everyone. Unfortunately, we have a federal government that doesn't believe that. I still, I still stand and pledge allegiance to the flag, because I still believe in America, and I believe in the people in this country. If I can read a quote to you from Carl Schur, Schur's, "My country, right or wrong, if right, to be kept right, and if wrong, to be set right. I view flying the Progress Pride Flag as our opportunity to do, do our part to set this country right." Alder Humke.
Awesome, thank you. It was such a pleasure to put this resolution forward, and I too will say that I'm really grateful for all of those of you who have spoken. I also want to put some context to those of you who spoke, who maybe don't understand why maybe there are some people who didn't speak in this room, or who didn't come today. Questions I got from people who are affected by this on a daily basis, who are part of the LGBTQ community, they asked me if this public comment is permanent record. They did not feel comfortable coming here and sharing their personal information for fear of, you know, repercussions of any sort. So that's, that's a real thing. So the people who aren't in this room are represented by this flag, just as much as the people who are in this room are represented. And last year, when I spoke about this, you know, I gave a lot of statistics. I echoed what other folks have said about, you know, the impacts and the percentages. But this year, I feel, I know that that's true. We have that information. What I have experienced this year has been nothing but joy, frankly, related to the Pride Flag. I've had the pleasure of attending the LGBTQ elder group meetings, where I have been welcomed openly. They have shared numerous times how, in other places that they have lived, that their elected officials would never have attended those meetings. It's a joy to see them coming together, to feel comfortable, to feel safe in this community. There's people who come from outside of Verona to come and share their experiences at those meetings. It's so welcoming and open, and I just, the people there, they unfortunately, like, didn't come today to speak, they came last year. But it's wonderful to know that we are a safe place, that people feel comfortable coming to our community. I'm going to share a story that was shared with us at the meeting, which is basically like, there's a, there's a couple that we met who lived in a different state and needed to get out of that state, because they were not safe going to, like, the grocery store. They were not safe bringing their partner, their spouse of how many years, lots of years, to their work function, because they are, of their safety and, and not feeling safe with people knowing that information. They came to Verona kind of randomly, and they saw the Pride Flags. They went to our restaurants, they went to our businesses, and they felt safe walking through the grocery store as a couple. And they moved here because of that. That makes me thrilled. That is what all communities should be, we should be welcoming. And that's just one story. I, I know the people of that group have many more stories. Another thing I'll share with you is that, you know, that group has started off really small. It meets, I mean, you know, in, in a room at the senior center, but recently, they had their first open mic event where they invited us to come. And it was awesome, because it wasn't just the LGBTQ elder group, it was the entire senior center. So there were people there from, that were, that are not necessarily a part of necessarily a part of that, but were welcomed into that space and performed, uh, as part of the open mic. And so it was lovely to see that this community has, within this year, expanded and welcomed, and other people who maybe were not as familiar with the people in that group, um, are now connected to that group. Um, and so, as many other people have said, you know, this is a space where we can be an ally to our neighbors, our friends. We have to use the power that we have as a council to make that impact. Um, I think we are still unique in the situation of flying the flag year-round, and I, I don't understand it frankly, because this should just be normal. This is, should be normalized, where the people who have talked about going to the, their work, going to school, like, you should feel joy going to school. You should feel joy going to work, knowing that you live someplace that you are belong, that you belong to. And the more we normalize this behavior, the more we see this flag, it will not be so strange for others. And I wish other communities would adopt this as well, um, because I just feel like it's just the right thing to do. We live in a world that's really upside down right now. Um, and this is the one thing at this moment that I feel like we can do, that actually makes an impact in every, in many people's lives. Um, I, again, I'm going to, uh, reference an email I got, um, from somebody who is not a part of the LGBTQ community, but is a part of a religious community that maybe is marginalized sometimes. And they said, they see that pride flag, um, in all these spots, and they feel safer here because of that. So it is not just, when we talk about the colors and how it represents all people, it really does represent all people. It says that all the people that live here are protected and safe. And I'm really grateful to be a part of the community that represents that. So, thank you.
Uh, motion before the body? Other questions or comments on the motion? Alder Keller?
I just wanted to briefly thank those who are not in the room, who did email me and probably other folks here. Even though you were not able to come and speak, or didn't feel comfortable to speak, we did hear you. And, um, I really, it's always lovely to, to get the engagement from the community. So, um, thank you all, and, um, thank you to, uh, Beth and Mara, and for the rest of the council for bringing this up again. I'm really excited and, um, really grateful to be able to vote on this tonight. So, thank you.
Alder Laido?
So I had to miss, uh, the meeting last year when we voted on, um, this, uh, resolution for 2025. Um, and I feel like, although other council members, public, have all spoken much more eloquently than I will have any hope of, uh, I do want to say, as a straight white male who considers himself an, an ally, um, this is, this is, on one hand, a, a symbolic gesture, uh, but symbols matter. Um, you know, growing up as a Boy Scout and an Eagle Scout and son of a veteran, um, I have tremendous respect, uh, for our national flag. And if I thought that this community supporting a flag flying underneath it that is a symbol of acceptance and, uh, understanding that folks like me don't understand, don't experience what others are experiencing on a daily basis, um, then, then I could be more swayed by the folks who have said this is a political flag, or this does not represent, um, our community and at large. Um, however, I see nothing in the sentiments expressed here, or the sentiments built into the pride flag that does that, and therefore, I'm very happy to join my fellow council members in support of this resolution.
Uh, other questions or comments? Seeing no further, uh, discussion, uh, all those in favor, Resolution Number 25-036, Resolution to Publicly Support the LGBTQIA+ Community and Fly the Progress Pride Flag at Designated City Facilities in 2026, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? And that motion passes. Uh, with that, we move on to item 12, which is adjournment. Motion to adjourn would be in order.
I move to adjourn.
Motion by Alder Humke, is there a second?
I second the movement to adjourn.
Second by Alder Harrison. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? And we adjourned at 9:34 PM. Thank you, everyone.